And we're ready.
Thank you. Well, good evening and welcome to the April 27th, 2022 Regular Meeting of Hamilton City Council. So I've got a full house tonight, and that's a good thing. We've got some very smart young people here, so this is going to be just a really good evening. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We're going to start off with an offering of prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able. Almighty God, give us peace in our American streets. Give us peace on the streets of Ukraine as democracy is truly local. Guide us, guide the world's leaders to make, to make good decisions. Protect our military, public safety, public servants. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now go to special presentations, and the first one is the Brookwood Elementary School Lego Team. We're going to recognize them. But before y'all come up here, we're going to play this really neat video. So if you've got the video ready?
Yes, sir.
It's all, kind of watch this video and see what these youngsters have been doing.
Hi, welcome to Lego League at Brookwood Elementary.
We have 10 members on our team, and we meet two times a week.
We do an innovative project, and we program robots.
This year for our project, we had to identify a real-world problem with transportation of cargo, and then come up with a solution for that problem.
For our project, we found that Denali National Park in Alaska uses dog sleds in the winter to transport cargo through the park, because the Wilderness Act of 1964 says absolutely no motorized motors or noise in the park to protect the wilderness.
The problem that we found is that with climate change, the snow is melting too early in the season, and the sleds can't go through the gravel much.
So we designed some sled skates that pop rattles onto the road. These skates have wheels and rubber tracks.
We met with the park ranger from Denali National Park on a zing pole two different times.
Originally, they would take pastures after school one day and drop two towards their factory and learn about robots.
You want to say our robots? They don't feel like a milestone robots. They have motors, sensors, and ultrasonic sensors. These are our robots. Here's, here's our best working one. This is Bob. This is Bob. Here's our, this is one of our older ones.
We code to make our robots do different tasks on our table. For instance, right here, we had medium motor resets. That way, if one of our motors is not working, it will walk up, and then we drive forward with this one, and we walk with this one.
We programmed robots to go faster, slower, to turn, and to deliver things. The robot has to unload the cargo plan, and this is how it looks like. Then the robot has to come over here and push this out of here. The best parts about Lego League are making new friends, discovering, watching things in science, using engineering and physics.
We love to go building robots with Legos.
We have to do a lot of problem solving to make the robots do what we want them to do.
Practicing our presentation skills.
We get to think outside the box.
That means to think about things in new ways.
Because there's more than one way to solve a problem.
Wow. All right, I got an idea. Kristy, can you go to the podium and introduce yourself? Then I want you to introduce each one, one by one, like this is kind of like the All-Star Game, you know, one by one. They're all, they're going to come up here after you introduce the first one, and then his or her parents will stand. So we're going to treat this like an All-Star team, okay?
Okay.
But tell us first about the program generally, and then do the intros, one by one.
Okay, well, I'm Kristy Bungar. I'm the speech therapist at Brookwood Elementary. We've had Lego League at Brookwood for eight or 10 years, I forget. And the kids love it. So, now, they were going to introduce themselves, but I'll do it your way. So we'll do it this way. First of all, my co-coach is Lori Fangman. And we have Keegan Glome.
His parents here, there you go.
Abigail Kopic. Paige Robinson. Xavier Fails. Isaac Garen. And Reed Fangman. And we have a few members who couldn't come tonight. Blake, what's Blake, Blake Glaze, sorry, and James Hostler, and Connor Powell. They weren't able to come.
Okay. Now, I want to have Joel say a few words, because he says, and he convinced, not that he's convinced, we came out to your school, because Joel said, hey, you've got to see this. So Joel, you want to kind of tell them what's going on? You can come down there if you want to, whatever you want to do.
We can do whatever, we can do whatever you guys want. Want me to stay up here? You want me to come? I'm coming to you guys.
There you go.
At the school board meeting, these guys have won some awards. What awards have you guys won?
So this gold medal that we got was for one of the tournaments that we won, and that this gold one was for the second, and then...
This is our breakthrough awa- award, because we are rookies.
Rookies of the Year.
And then this one is from the Lakota Thunderhawks Regional Qualifier for the Innovation Project Award.
You guys have done such a wonderful job. I've seen these guys at the board meeting, the school board meeting, and I put this on, and I went to Mary Ann and talked to her about it. Thank you, guys, for sharing. Ms. Bungar, thank you for all your extra hours after school. I think that it's important that, that we know as the public, that we have teachers that volunteer and do these things on their own time, and commit theirselves to these young people here. You guys, I don't know if you get enough recognition as to some of the wonderful things that your minds do. And you guys have created a real problem-solving project, and I'm so happy to be here up with, up with you guys. This is great. I want to continue to do this stuff, and I want to see where you guys go in the future. You guys are all talkers, and very pleasant and respectful. So, Ms. Bungar and Ms. Fangman, thank you for all that you do in the extra time, just volunteering and giving to these young students.
All right, Kristy, what do you got, what do you want to say about these folks? What could we?
So they are awesome, and they use their core values at every practice and everywhere we go. Do you guys want to tell what your core values are and how you use them?
So our core values are discovery, innovation, impact dis- We get lightning bolts for each, well, a different color lightning bolt for each of the core values. Yellow is impact, blue is discovery, gold is fun.
White is inclusion, orange is innovation, and green is teamwork.
And then our idea for these lightning bolts, we thought about the Ohio State Buckeyes, how they get Buckeyes on their helmet, and then we figured out this core idea that every time we do something positive or mindfulness, we would get lightning bolts.
Very cool.
Very cool.
You notice it's on the back of their shirts?
Yeah.
Very neat.
On the sleeves, on the back.
Would you like them to demonstrate the robot?
Why don't we do the first thing first?
Okay.
The, what was done for Denali?
Yes.
Can we have one by, one person in the audience pick that up, so that everybody can see it?
Sure, we can go do it.
Now, I got the guy, white guy, Mike Germain, going to help you out. He is a huge man and Ohio State Buckeye. Maybe he can hold on to that. He won't drop anything that's got to do with Buckeye or lightning bolts.
So this is a, you guys want to talk about it? Sure. You can stay up there, just tell them what it is. Percent model is this.
It's a 50% scale model. And this is our prototype of our design.
And it's called the Sludskate 3000s.
And what exactly does that do?
So, as the video was showing, it had pictures of when the snow's melting for Denali National Park, and then they couldn't go through, so they would have to lift up the snow sled. And the snow sleds are usually very heavy, so then we created this design model, which would help them, because the dogs could pull up to about like 100 something pounds each, yeah, 100 pounds for each dog.
Because they could be 90 miles into Denali and stuck with their sled and can't get back out of the park. So this solves the problem, and they liked your project.
Very good. That's amazing. I think I'm going to applaud for that. All right, what's next?
You want to demonstrate your robot? So they, they had to compete against other local teams with their robot. Every team has the same mat and the same Lego models, and they would get the same points for the different missions, but teams can choose which missions they want to attack with their model or with their robot, and try to get more points than the other teams. And they usually have to do this in two and a half minutes, but... Did you turn it on already, Keegan? Okay. But just don't let it run off the table if it gets close. We normally have walls on our table. And they all take turns coding different missions, designing different robot pieces, and we just took the best missions and put them all in the same robot for the competition.
So this one's platoon, as we call it, because these are called platoon trucks, and then it will connect it, and then it will knock the blue box off.
Reed be up, be ready to catch that robot, Reed.
I got it.
That's the first mission. And they get to plan out how they want to do their missions.
And then sometimes the missions always don't work the first.
That's like real life, isn't it?
It's real-life problem solving.
So, for this one, we're going to try getting these gray blocks into this circle right here. Then we're going to try to knock this over like this into the circle.
Do your best. Sorry, I didn't bring that piece. Just do your best.
There you go.
Problem solver.
Very important skill. I think one of the youngsters said something about thinking outside of the box.
There it is.
More than one way to solve a problem. Wait.
Could it be because the table's facing all the way?
No. To try the right remission? Just run a different one if that doesn't work.
Oh, yeah. All right.
So for this mission, we're going to try getting, um, both sides of the bridge down, then deliver this yellow box to that white thing, well, the door, then, um, knock down the train tracks, and then, um, hit the yellow box, um, that is touching the helicopter.
A lot to do right there.
That is.
We didn't see that. We also say that a lot.
It's been a few months since they've done this.
It's in the wrong way.
Pretty much sounds like the executive leadership team discussing any politics. Josh Rock, is Rich Engel taking notes? No, he's just smiling on the inside. It's kind of like strategic planning yesterday. Smallness.
So for instance, right here, it's saying it got stuck.
Re-run that, Keegan.
Okay, guys, let's use this one.
I think your little attachment's in the wrong spot.
Oh, this attached to me. Oh.
Improvise again.
Okay, let's try this.
I love those three words, "let's try this." Too high. Nice, got it. It's all right. It's all right.
We hear uh-oh a lot in the competitions, too. That's all right. Do you want them to run their last mission, or are we out of time, or?
They could do the last mission.
Okay. Go ahead and do your last one.
So for this mission, we're going to try to watch this truck to that truck. Then we're going to, um, not, well, hit this right here, and not get over to here.
And that's unloading a barge.
Then we're going to try delivering that food package and a dog sled into this cargo connector circle. What's it doing? Listen to me. Yes. It missed.
Yeah. Well, you didn't have the right part, so you improvised.
Right. And the best part about this is the kids do all the work. We just guide them, give them the opportunities to do it, and they have to think it through and, and problem-solve it for themselves, so.
Very cool. Eric, do you have anything, if you were there at the school as well, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I, I was going to say the, uh...
Thank you.
One thing, one thing you didn't get to see was, first of all, when they came in tonight, they got their medals, because they were waiting on those when we were at the school, and they were, the smile on your faces was really cool to see that. And second of all, you don't really see the hard work that goes into, computer program was interesting to me. And when we were over there to see what you have to do to program this, and again, you said problem solving, and somebody said thinking out of the box, and you saw how when they start having problems, they're a good little team. They jumped right into, you know, right in there and start working on it without fighting. That was really cool. So, but that's, um, it, it was, we got to see a lot more of it. We got to see a little bit more of the program. And, I mean, Legos, my gosh, when I was a kid, you know, you just stepped on them and just put little things together, but look how they, look, look how they've, you know, progressed here. And it's, I, I just think it's great that you have something like this that, you know, keeps the mind working very well. They're, they're going to be future, I don't know, they're going to be, they, they may be here in the city as engineers. Rich Engel, you better watch out. But it's, uh, it, really thinking outside of the box is really cool, and the problem solving is probably my favorite part of it. So, great job.
Good job.
Great job.
Thank you. How about a standing ovation for these All-Stars here?
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Kristy.
We'll just clean that up later.
Nice work. Good job.
Okay. That's a tough group to follow, but we've got the Hamilton Fire Department Recruitment Report. That's going to be a really good report. This should work this time. Good luck.
Okay, well, Mayor and Council, thank you for having us this evening. As you said, this is a tough one to follow, and yesterday, as we were working on the agenda, I tried not to follow this, so that we had a little bit easier task, but...
Facts.
So, for everybody in the audience that doesn't know, Mark Mercer, I'm the fire chief, and this is Gene Pope, the Director of Human Resources.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
And our topic here tonight is a little bit about the work that we're doing to change how we hire. Well, the work is already done. We want to highlight the efforts and some of the preliminary results for you on how we're filling our staffing with the Fire Department. So, let's see, this is a few pictures of a couple of things. Our Fire Department staff on the left, Gene and myself on the right, and then your commitment to our Fire Department, to our safety. This is one of the newest fire trucks that we've just put in service in the last week or so. So, thank you.
We're super excited to, you know, go through our process. The first thing we did was analyze, you know, what has transpired over the last couple of years. We wanted to take a crucial, in-depth look to how we were recruiting, you know, where were we recruiting, and again, what were our results? And then, based on the information and the data that we found, we created a template for success.
He's got it.
With that, since I've been chief in 2018, even a little bit before that, we haven't been fully staffed. We, we looked at the, the why we couldn't get staffed, and there are a lot of things, some of them internal, some of them external. Prior to this, for economic reasons, and really, the standard hiring practice in, in our, in our business is that we look for full-time, or we look for people who are already firefighter and paramedics. Some of those barriers to getting in there include, you know, the cost of getting the education, or the fact that they're already established somewhere else. As we worked through all of the exit interviews, things that we look at why people leave here, low entry pay, it was hard for us to attract people who were qualified and established in another fire department to come here. We were not competitive with those, those other cities and townships with whom we, with whom we complete, compete for, for firefighters. There's a high demand for firefighters in the region. That, that's no secret. We've all worked to get the best applicants at times, and, and it's rewarding when I can. We hire applicants that are already firefighters in, in other cities. You know, they, they want to come and work for us for different reasons, but there are also some drawbacks to that. The, some of the issues with the low entry pay, if we're trying to hire firefighters that are established somewhere else, you know, we're, we're actually, we had to start them at, at that, that entry level pay. We've worked around that. We'll talk a little bit about that in a few moments. Navigating the application process, which is a challenge for people, especially when you look at people coming from different backgrounds and different different levels of comfort with technology. And then the last thing was our retention rates, and Gene will talk a little bit about some of those.
So we would find and hire folks, but, you know, keeping them attached to the city of Hamilton and invested in the Hamilton Fire Department was challenging. You know, there was regular resignations and retirements, and that's natural attrition. What we didn't want were people going to other institutions, returning back to institutions from whence they came, and seeing better pay opportunities, better educational opportunities, better leadership opportunities elsewhere. So we wanted to create a portfolio of opportunities for individuals, and I think that we have done that with renegotiating the contract and putting in some different pay incentives, and then adjusting the educational requirements, and then offering educational support. But you'll also see that we've adjusted the way that we recruit people. It's not just sort of an invisible anonymous person online. We're actually going out and utilizing ourselves as ambassadors for our employment in our program here.
So to talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we've had, since we, we did a recruitment effort in December of 2021, we posted it for about five or six weeks, pretty standard for recruitment. The people that we're hiring know they're in the fire service, they're, they know when the jobs are open. With that, we ended up with four candidates that we could interview for positions. I have six vacancies and, and four projected vacancies this year. So out of those four candidates, I could make a job offer to and hire one. He'll start May 9. That still leaves me with 10 projected vacancies for this year. If I repeated that same process 10 times, I could fill my ranks. But realistically, what we're looking for is how do we, how do we, you know, get rid of those barriers to being a Hamilton firefighter, and how do we find the best candidates to serve our citizens? So, and that, that has been the trend historically, every, probably for the last five years, every time we've hired, we've immediately had vacancies after the hiring process was completed.
So once we had the data, we analyzed it, you know, we kicked around some ideas, it's time for us to implement the solutions. So that meant increasing new higher pay for the incoming recruits and candidates, offering support educationally, funding the paramedic and firefighter one and two certification. We also adjusted to make more competitive our current employees' pay, because those that we have, we wanted to retain our staff, of course. And then we also expanded our recruitment efforts. So Chief Mercer and I are often together, going out to Butler Tech, Hamilton High School, Baden, really wherever, Efricious, wherever. Wherever we are, we're recruiting, you know, out to lunch, I'm saying it. So we've worked with Butler Tech to be a regular part of their presentation program. What we have found is because we make the effort to go out and personally introduce ourselves to the community, that gives interest to people. They notice that we're making the commitment and... They notice that we're making the commitment and spending our time to, you know, provide information on our program and see what they are needing in order to be attracted to our program, and that counts. And we have had some good success with our Butler Tech, um, candidates. We also have broadened our scope regarding our website, our social media recruitment. We don't just advertise on NeoGov or gov.com anymore. We're on LinkedIn, we're on Facebook, we are on Instagram. We have other websites that we utilize, you know, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, you know, there's the Black Firefighters Association, and we send it out to all of our networks. The other thing that we wanted to do was ensure that we were collaborating with our personnel that was already here. So, we asked the firefighters to join us in the recruitment of people, of candidates, to work alongside them. And not only were they interested in doing that, but they were heavily involved, and I think that made a world of difference as well.
Uh, so, after the last, uh, if you remember the last effort that we had where I had four applicants and one that I could hire, uh, we ran this recruitment process for about six weeks. With that, we had 279 applicants. That was anybody that we could reach out to, anybody that called me. I had people in my office at least once a week that we were spending an hour, hey, let me tell you what the fire department's like, let me take you to a fire station, let me show you what, um, what this environment looks like. So, 279 applicants of that, 117 have taken and passed the exam. So, instead of those four candidates that I can look at to hire for 10 jobs, I have 117 applicants that I can consider to fill the 10 jobs that I still have open. For the first time in five years, four years at least, um, my fire department will be fully staffed, our citizens will get as much service as we can possibly provide for them. Um, 133 of the applicants either signed up through the application process and did not complete the exam, or they failed the exam, and then a handful of them, the 29, uh, didn't complete the application. And there was some data missing where they just couldn't get through, either they didn't provide an age, or they didn't provide enough information to get there. So, uh, overall, incredible success. Instead of the, uh, the few applicants that we could consider, we have a lot more to look at to find those best candidates for us.
Absolutely. Uh, we also are looking forward to drilling down a little bit further into the information and to see what our demographics are, um, females, um, and, uh, different ethnic groups. We want to ensure that we are welcoming and giving everyone, um, an equitable step into our, uh, fire department. So, we'd like to see what we can do to make things, um, a little better in that respect. Before we end, I do want to also thank my staff, human resources, specifically Jennifer Cox and Brittany Chapman, one of our newest members. They worked diligently and put out maximum effort, I would think, for, um, our fire department, for us to achieve these results. And I'm, I'm thinking that you were pleased, sir.
Absolutely. Uh, the comments that I got from the applicants and the candidates were, even though they had a hard time getting through some things, more than once I had people in my office at my computer to make sure they could get logged in and tested. Uh, I know that they all reached out, particularly to Brittany, uh, for their personal contacts. Each of the pictures you've seen in our presentation tonight are from your Hamilton Fire Department, uh, and that, these are the jobs that we do and the community involvement that we have. The, uh, the left, the left-hand picture there is an old picture of the Beckett Paper Fire, where our firefighters were out there, even though there was no business to save, there was still definitely structure and economy to save and architecture. If you look up the street, you see that even though some years later, we still have that. Uh, the center picture is, uh, the Family Dollar Store Fire Over in, uh, Town and Country Shopping Center, uh, where our firefighters were there. Even though it did burn out one complete business there, it did save the entire, uh, the rest of the shopping center and businesses that were open there. They opened the next day, they were ready to go. And then the community involvement there on the right hand is Alive After Five several years ago, where, um, Hamilton's kids and adults were able to come out and see some of the, the training and the firefighter challenge that we did. Just an opportunity for them to be involved and for us to be engaged with them. Our guys are, guys and gals are active in the community, they, they love the job. Um, I swear, for the first time in all the recruitment efforts, our people were excited because they could reach out to people they know that wanted to be in the fire service, people that they could, uh, refer to the Hamilton Fire Department, um, and, and find them an opportunity to serve our citizens as well.
Anything?
With that, Council, any questions that you have? We can talk a long time.
Any questions? That's very impressive.
Great.
All right.
Great.
That's really a smart change.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next presentation is, um, electric vehicle charging stations.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Gurr. I'm the senior project manager for, uh, City Hamilton's Public Works Department. Um, I'll talk to you guys a little bit tonight about our electric vehicle charging station project that we're currently underway, and why this is important for the city of Hamilton. Um, before we get into this, um, want to talk, you know, just a couple of key points here of why this is important to the city. First and foremost is, is this supports our, our current theme of low or zero emission, uh, carbon emissions, like our, our hydros producing the electric, uh, as well as low emissions, uh, such as like, uh, with, uh, our fuel that we have with our CNG fuel or compressed natural gas station there on, on Erie Boulevard. Uh, the other aspect of it is, is really, this is, this is innovative and in the way of the future. Um, I say that, and I was, um, and, and the reason in supporting that, that statement is, I actually was reading an article the other day that's, uh, just came out. I brought it with me, and I'm not going to read this in depth, but I just, there was a couple of key things in here I just wanted to, to outline. Um, it's from Consumer Reports, and it was dated April 13th of 2022, so just, uh, you know, actually, just, just recently here. And it talks, really, it's, it's high level. It, it talks about really every manufacturer that makes automobiles and what their intents are with electric vehicles. So, I, I decided I just wanted to pull out just a couple. Honda Motor Corp., uh, their plans are that they, they aim for, uh, all sales to be zero emission electrified vehicles by 2040. And then, uh, Ford Manufacturing is actually planning to produce more than 2 million EV vehicles annually by 2026, half of its global sales volume by 2030. And then General Motors is aiming to have 20 EV available lineups by 2025 and move 100% to electric model lineups by 2035. Um, just those three manufacturers are, are millions and millions of vehicles. Uh, it's coming. And, and there's, you know, pretty much every other one follows suit in this article. So, uh, needless to say, it's, it's important for us to get ahead of this, it's coming. So, the city of Hamilton, actually, uh, as part of this, uh, initiative, we were awarded a grant that we applied for, for $45,000 to install three stations, uh, each one roughly $15,000. Um, and we, we're actually, we, we received, we're going to receive the money. We have to fund the money first, put the, uh, the sites in, and then request reimbursement. So, the money was actually allocated and budgeted in 2021. Um, as part of that, we went out and reviewed, uh, several manufact, or several organizations that promote this. ChargePoint was actually the group that we aligned with. They are a national, uh, service provider of, of, uh, EV equipment as well as the, the charging services itself. Uh, but several others like Tesla, um, and there's EV Go and many, many others. ChargePoint seemed to be the, the best, uh, fit for our needs. Um, one of the largest networks throughout the country, um, as well as providing the customer support aspect of it for using our sites. Now, before we get too far into depth, I want to talk just high level about the difference of the different types of charging stations. Really kind of early on, uh, in its infancy, it was the Level 1, um, or a type that would be installed at someone's residential, uh, home. Uh, these are really kind of a, uh, very slow type charging, takes anywhere from 11 to 20 hours on average to charge a, a vehicle. Uh, Level 2, uh, is actually a little bit more advanced. These are the type that we are in the process of installing. Uh, looks very similar to the picture that you see there. Uh, the, uh, these are much quicker at charging. They, you know, between three to eight hours for a full charge. Uh, and then Level 3, uh, these are called the fast charge. Those are, um, much more quick, you're talking roughly anywhere from 90 minutes, uh, I'm sorry, 30 minutes to charge, you know, 90 miles or roughly about an hour to get a full charge. We actually just applied for a grant for a Level 3. Um, they're much more expensive, uh, more to come on those down the road. We'll see how we go with the grant on those. The three locations that we had to name in the grant and were approved for, um, first location is at 123 Main Street. Uh, this is, uh, right there behind Clark's, um, on B Street and, and Main. Uh, there's, uh, some, uh, open parking lot right there, uh, kind of like by the Miami School. And then the other locations that we have is the, uh, uh, auxiliary parking lot for Spooky Nook, right next to the Hamilton Power Plant up on, uh, Third Street. And then the, the final location is, uh, on South Third, uh, Third Street, just behind the Butler County, uh, parking garage. So, the equipment, the Level 2 equipment that we're installing is called a CT4000. Um, the, actually, it's a dual port, so it's capable of charging two vehicles simultaneously. Um, the, the nice thing about this equipment is, is it comes with a very intuitive, um, video screen that can pretty much illustrate exactly how to use it. Uh, it does also provide, uh, ChargePoint has, um, a 24/7, uh, access if someone still can't understand what, what it's, you know, trying to do as far as, you know, to make connection. It supports multiple languages, um, English, French, uh, and Spanish. The, uh, as well as, uh, with the sport, we'll also get, uh, reports on usage. We can get that for our utility team, so we can see how they're being used, how much electric they're using, et cetera. And then, um, you know, as I mentioned before, the CT4000s, these will provide, uh, roughly about 32 miles, uh, uh, on one-hour charge. Uh, these aren't intended to really charge a complete charge, they can. Ideally, these are intended for someone that's making, you know, a few, you know, errands here and there, and just wanting to do kind of a, a quick charge and then move on and such. Do you use these? Pretty simplistic. Um, ideally, you have a smartphone, an app goes on your phone itself. Uh, it has a, more or less, kind of a, uh, you have an account that you have accessed with that, with your payment, uh, Visa, MasterCard, what have you, already set up on your account. When you come up to the equipment, it basically bubbles up when your phone's close to it. It recognizes you, it will unlock the charge, uh, device that you can plug into your vehicle port. Um, and then, once you plug that in, it immediately starts charging your vehicle. Um, the charge then would be charged to your build count that you already have set up. Um, working through this and, and our, our provider ChargePoint, um, as well as with our, our, our utility team, knowing what our costs are on the electric side, and then utilizing some of the, uh, recommendations that ChargePoint had shared with us, we come up with a, um, starting point of 27 cents per kilowatt hour to use, utilize our stations. From a comparison standpoint, uh, the city of Columbus, who currently has these already installed, uh, ranges depending upon the location and who owns the equipment, anywhere from 10 to 30 cents per kilowatt hour. So, from a starting point, we're kind of right in that range there. Um, we'll have to obviously see how the reporting goes to determine whether that makes sense for us, um, or if we need to adjust. In addition to the, that charge, um, it was also recommended to us by ChargePoint that a pretty standard customary for other charging stations is, is that we provide a buffer of roughly about 40, 30 minutes to, um, move their vehicles out of the space. Ideally, we want people to use these, um, if they're, after their charge is complete, the device will actually notify their cell phone that their charge is complete. Then after that 30-minute grace period, then a $2, uh, an hour charge would start being assessed to their actual account, uh, for failure to move their vehicle. Ideally, that is to promote, obviously, to move their vehicle. Uh, one of the locations, uh, as I mentioned earlier, this is our Main Street. Again, these are all currently, are still in the, uh, project phase. Um, this one actually had a, uh, a flower bed that we actually had to, uh, take out and utilize more of the parking space in there. Um, as part of the grant, we have to have an ADA compliance as part of one, one of the two spaces. Um, we've actually have completed everything with the exception of installing the actual charge device itself. To install those, essentially, we've got the pad already, uh, poured, it's ready to go, the bolt, the, uh, the installation bolts, everything, the anchors, all that stuff, the wire, everything's there, we just essentially have to set it. Our plan is to set all three and activate all three at the same time, uh, which is a very quick process. Um, we've got the signage up, everything's ready to go with, at that location. This is the, uh, North Third Street, right there, the, uh, auxiliary parking lot. Again, uh, we've got ADA compliance there, we've got our Bullards up, we've got our pad in, uh, our signage is up. Again, just waiting, uh, for all three spaces to be ready to just set the, the device in there. Uh, this one is, is the lot that's just behind, uh, this is the L Lot, uh, right there, just behind the park, the, uh, Butler County Parking Garage. This one is the one that's taken the most time. Um, this one actually required us to set a transformer, so we had to get the, uh, electric distribution folks involved. A little bit more cumbersome, we had to, uh, cut up and do a little bit more concrete work here. Um, I can say that, uh, we are very close now to getting, uh, we're probably within a week to two weeks of setting the, the, uh, actual, all the, the EV charging, uh, devices at all three locations and getting them activated. So, real close. Um, this one, again, just is, need a little bit more work, and then once we get it to where the other two are, then we'll install all three devices. So, next steps, again, as I said, we're going to start all the, the pedestals themselves. Um, once we install them, we need to then activate them. Uh, we've already worked with ChargePoint, they have them mapped, they have all the equipment as far, the equipment serial numbers, we've already provided that to them. Um, these work through a satellite, um, cellular connectivity. Um, we've already get confirmed that, uh, cellular coverage is great in all three locations, so that's already been, um, confirmed. Uh, once we get those activated, then we have to test them. Uh, that was actually, uh, a little bit of a chuckle because once we got them confirmed, and, and I know that, you know, as I mentioned earlier, that there's going to be a lot of electric vehicles, but currently, we have zero electric vehicles in the city's fleet. So, uh, talking with our team, uh, we actually had to get, get out there and talk with some of our folks, and we discovered that there was, uh, a couple of city employees that actually have personal vehicles, so we're gonna, we're gonna test those. Um, once we confirm that they're all tested out correctly, then, uh, then we go through to get our, our Ohio EPA, um, inspections completed. Once those are completed, then we can request for our reimbursement. Uh, our target date to be 100% complete with the project is by the end of May. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn, you're free.
I was recently at an OKI meeting, and they announced about $7.5 billion is coming down from the federal government for states to get money. So, hopefully, Hamilton will get part of that. I guess it's going to be dispersed to the states, and then cities can apply for it, and they're all the fast charge.
Correct. So, so as I had mentioned earlier, um, the, the fast charge that I was talking about, the state just, uh, recently announced that they were going to release roughly about $7 million, uh, for fast charging devices, but that was going to be stretched across 26 counties, ranging from Columbus, or I'm sorry, from Cleveland to Cincinnati. Butler County actually was, was a part of that. Ideally, that they're trying to target along the interstate corridor areas for these. Um, it's going to become very, very competitive. Uh, it's not, it's not tailored exclusively just to governmental entities. Um, the private entities can also, um, seek funding. Um, so, really, uh, it, it, it comes down to how much of an investment, um, do you want to make on yourself? Because those that make the most investment are the ones that are more likely going to get the funding.
Wow, that's $7.5 billion, sounded like a lot, but...
And, and in comparison, uh, one of the other aspects to it, so I had announced that, you know, with this grant, we're, we're receiving $45,000. The Level 2s are about $15,000 apiece. The fast charging devices are about $100,000 apiece. Um, they come with their own, they require their own transformer, uh, which are pretty cumbersome with each device. Um, so, with that being said, the, the, the electric requirements, uh, because the amperage is, you know, much higher, um, they're, they have to be really tailored for a specific location, uh, require a little bit more real estate for those devices, um, as well as, obviously, they're, they're a lot more expensive, too. So, we did apply for two. They're supposed to announce, um, they said in a perfect world, they're supposed to announce by the end of April. by the end of April, but they said realistically, because of the number of applicants that they're going to receive, it'll probably be closer to end of May or possibly June before they'll make an announcement.
Well, it does make sense to have it on the interstate where it's the fast charge, and, yeah. Thank you.
Please.
I know what's going to happen when, we don't have a lot of electric cars yet, but when we have busy weekends and somebody parks there, that's not an EV vehicle because they can't find a parking place, what is the fine? Or are we towing them away? Or what's going to happen in that case?
So, we're working, actually with, I've been talking with our traffic folks to help enforce that. The signage is up, that those are exclusively for electric vehicles while they're charging. So that's something that, you know, we're going to be working through. I know other municipalities, they find them, you know, as part of that, so that's something that we're, obviously, are trying to work through.
I mean, it can't be just a $10 parking ticket, because somebody's just going to saw this path, you know, so, that's what I was kind of wondering. So you're still working on that part?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bernard.
Mike, just maybe, in the conversation you shared, these are satellite-driven?
They're cellular.
Cellular? So, if we have visitors from Cincinnati, Dayton, when you said a 32-mile range that are looking to recharge to perhaps get back to their residence, or Hannover Township, Oxford, whatever it may be, their phones will be intuitive to point out to them where these are located in the city?
Absolutely. That's the wonderful part about being connected with ChargePoint. We'll be on their national network that covers globally. ChargePoint's based out of California, but if you were to Google EV charging stations, you would pull ChargePoint up right away. There's some located in Cincinnati, as well as, I mean, obviously, other providers, too. We would be on that map as well, as soon as we activate them. That's why we did not activate, we don't want to create any type of confusion until we're ready to launch all three at the same time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Michael, very much for the thorough report.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. Rich Engel, Director of Engineering. I just wanted to give you an update as to what has happened during the last two weeks since I gave a presentation regarding the Train Depot relocation. First of all, they actually started construction excavation for the foundations earlier this week and discovered some poor soil conditions, so we had our geotechnical representative there. We're going to overexcavate, dig deeper, obviously, for the footers, and then put a flowable fill, a more firm base underneath that, and we're getting that reviewed by the geotechnoengineer to make sure that we don't have any settlement on the buildings once the new structure is set on it. Also, had a conversation with CSX a couple days ago, they let us know that there is some asbestos in the building. We were told it's only in a couple of spots. I'm trying to determine what that means, and we're having more conversation with CSX. They did offer to do the remediation, and we will probably take them up on that. Hopefully, that'll help us in our efforts to get a time extension as well. Also, Law Director Letitia Block sent out the bill of sale. This will actually be the formal transfer of ownership of the Train Depot from CSX to the city, and we plan on getting that executed this week. And then, lastly, bracing of the doors and windows. I had talked to Coon Restoration earlier this week, they had planned to start that work on Monday, May 2. I got a call this afternoon that they're going to reschedule that, so it will not start as early as what I had stated. And also, for the Lego team, if they want a real-life challenge, we need to move a Train Depot into their future, so it might be helpful to have them take a look at that for us. Any questions on the Train Depot?
Yeah, I've got a question, Rich. I think between this meeting and the last meeting, I believe you did get a figure for the cost to demo the connecting structure between the two buildings, is that correct?
That is correct. It was $23,500, and that includes the structure between the two buildings, as well as the two chimneys to take them down to the roof line.
You estimated that at $30,000, and that's $23.5, is what you're going to be able to do it for?
Actually, we had to estimate, I think, at $35,000.
Maybe it might. Yes, you're right, it was $35,000, okay.
There was a, there will be a cost savings on that, and we're still working on the, the windows, as I noted, as an estimate of $275,000. I think that's a real obvious cost that we need to look at more closely, and Liz was gracious enough to help and assist us with that evaluation through the ADRB, so we're going to take her up on that as soon as we get some time to do so.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Rich, in looking at the sheet, if it says zero, does that mean we don't have to pay anything, that the city is doing it, as opposed to zero, we don't know what the cost is yet?
No, if it's zero, then, well, there might be some items that have zero that we just don't have an estimate yet. For instance, the, I can't think of it right now, but at the end of it, we had some zero...
Well, like, the first line item is clean out the basement.
CSX has done that.
Okay. And then, disconnect utilities coming into the building has a zero. So does that mean because the city is doing that?
Correct.
Okay. So there is a difference between just a blank and a zero?
Yes.
But there's still a few blanks on here. How soon they may be, like the storage for the buildings and...
Well, it is our desire and hope that that will not be needed because of the timing with getting wolf movers in here to move and store it. We have a 30-day storage period in the cost at the moment, plus we have their 60-day that they're going to store it at no additional cost as part of their bid.
So we're up to 1.9 million right now?
Depending on if we...
Awfully close to 2 million.
Correct. But it depends on what work is actually going to be done. For instance, we have the HVAC work that can be delayed until we know who the potential user of the building might be. So there are some items that we don't necessarily have to do immediately.
So, at our last meeting, when we talked about being over 2 million, I believe Joshua said that we, council would have to prioritize some things, and then we would have to vote on appropriations?
So, the $2 million has already been appropriated.
Right.
So, at this point, it's more of a prioritization of, once Rich has final budget numbers on a variety of things, you may decide that a parking lot is more important than a roof, or windows are more important than landscaping. So, once we know all the different budget numbers, and we know that we currently have a $2 million budget, we will present those to council, and then we'll let you tell us how you want to prioritize that spending.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Rich, you said something about the storage, we may be able to save that. If they pour the foundation, how quick can they set that building? Is it a 30-day wait period, or is it...
Yes, it's 30 days. The concrete has to cure for 30 days.
So your hope is that, basically, we can let it cure for 30 days, not move it till it's cured, because we have an extension with CSX, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the plan forward that we're going to approach with CSX.
Seems like if they're going to do remediation on the asbestos, we probably get an extension for it.
I would believe so.
Good. That'll save us money by coordinating that and setting the building, and we're not storing it then.
That is correct. And in my opinion, that's an easier process to get it moved and set over the foundations, rather than set them off to the side and then move them again.
The storage is what, $35,000 a month?
Yeah, something like that.
$32,000, $35,000 a month? Okay.
Perfect. Thanks.
Anything else on this one? Okay, thank you, Rich.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager also asked me to give you an update on the Baden Crosswalk.
Yes, if you would.
Sure. So the construction drawings are complete and ready for moving forward. We've got all of the right-of-way acquired for the project, and as we noted previously, the ODOT had paused their abbreviated safety program in 2020 due to the, they were not sure what the outcome of the COVID would have on their gasoline tax revenues. So we had a call with ODOT yesterday. The abbreviated safety program is being re-implemented. There's a deadline of July 1 of this year, 2022, to apply for funding. They have a cap at $250,000 with a 10% matching. And so we're going to bring that to council, request the permission to apply for that. The project is nearly $500,000, but ODOT indicated that they would consider additional funding if we obviously show that it is a quality, safety-funded program. Also, in addition, we've been waiting for ODOT to issue the cost and grant us the material cost for rotating rapid-flash beacons, similar like we have on Heaton Street. And we've applied for probably a dozen or more of those different RRFBs, as they're called. If we were able to get one of those, if we get the funding for that, and we expect that to be announced soon, we would put one of those rapid-flashing beacons at the intersection of East Fairway and New London, just to provide additional safety for pedestrians crossing there. But again, we're going to apply for the other project, which is actually a widening of New London Road and providing a center turn lane, which obviously would help with the safety there in front of the high school. Any questions on that?
So we're going to, it's going to become pretty aggressive trying to get that funding, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
When would that money be awarded? So, if July 1 is when, after that, we could apply?
It would be fiscal year 2024, which means it would be available July 1, 2023.
Okay, so it would be an additional year before, if we were awarded the money? Okay.
Correct.
Rich, is there ever a scenario that if they tell us that we're going to be awarded, let's say, this summer, that we can go ahead and install it and just reimburse ourselves when the funds come in?
We can check with ODOT, but typically, they do not work in that manner.
If you don't mind checking, I would like to understand what their thoughts would be with that, number one. And number two, I apologize not to put Rich on the spot since he's here. There was a New London meeting, neighborhood meeting, and there was a lot of discussion about a new traffic signal at Washington Boulevard and New London Road. I was wanting to check with council on how you would like to proceed with input, how you would like to, I think that Rich received a traffic engineering recommendation to install it, but I mean, that's a big change for that area, and I just want to understand from your thought process on...
I personally would like to see a true survey of that area. I didn't get a chance to go to the meeting. I'm very familiar with that intersection. I know there could be some improvements there. There's some tough left turns there, some really serious tough left turns, but I'd have to survey the area a little bit better than just the one meeting myself.
I think that area right there, I mean, I've complained about that area a lot, and because you have a dead spot looking to your left, coming off Washington, going toward the bridge, and there's a blind spot with that retaining wall and everything right there. It's just, to me, I think, I've been wanting a light there for a long time. I know it's going to do some impact to the area right there, but, you know, do we take the impact, or we get somebody killed? Because there's going to be a lot more traffic up there, and it is, the blind spot right and left, no matter where you look at it, and...
You've got to calm that traffic somehow. I see it going past Hogan all the time. There's got to be some way to calm that traffic one way or the other.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bernard.
Rich, we've done studies on other intersections. When is the last time, and again, as Joshua said, not putting you on the spot, do you have any recollection when the last time a study was done to potentially put a light, a stop signal light at that intersection?
At that particular intersection? I'm not sure there ever was one done previously.
Okay. And that's fair. You know, people talk about caution lights, they talk about the intersection, when you just said, at East Fairway, and putting up the caution lights and things like that for pedestrian traffic. As we've all agreed, that area is just, is going to become more used. You talked about the turn lane opportunity for the high school, which is just up past the golf course and things. So, if we can take a look at that and potentially have options that we could weigh, pros and cons and things like that, I think that would be ideal.
For the intersection of South Washington and New London?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I don't disagree with anything. I think it's absolutely prudent that we do do the study. Susan, you and I were at that meeting, and there is some generated interest, but also with Baden, looking to expand their facility and add the football stadium, I think the time is now for us to prepare the city for some potential increased traffic on New London, excuse me, on New London Road, with some games being there on Friday, Saturday nights. So I think it's a good idea we take a look at that.
Mr. Mayor, there was a meeting back in the fall, and the information came from that group saying, "We would like to see a study," and something done at that intersection. So that's why Rich was invited to that meeting. He and Scott Hoover both came, did a great presentation for the group, and said, you know, "We believe this is warranted at this intersection." So, I think that, other than the neighborhood not being polled as to what do you want, I think the study has been done. Am I correct, Rich?
That is correct.
Yeah. So we know that traffic warrants it, and I think, too, it's a priority. We had a student struck at Baden, what, 18 months ago, maybe now? We applied for this money, it's been almost a year that we were awarded money. Now to say it's going to be another year is concerning to me, that we are not putting money or not taking action to get something done, because I would hate to see something else happen.
So, if there's the crosswalk, then there's the light. They're two different buckets.
No, no, I know. Baden, I think, is a priority.
The crosswalk.
The crosswalk, I'm sorry.
I get the picture now.
I'm sorry, not the light.
I get the picture now.
Yeah. The light, I think, is important, but I believe the priority right now is the Baden Crosswalk, where we have hundreds, if not thousands, of cars a day going by there.
I'm going to look into this.
Yes, I think next steps, we'll have Rich contact ODOT and find out what our options are to accelerate the installation of the crosswalk in front of Baden. And then, I will work with Brandon and 17 Strong on how we can educate and get input from the neighborhood and bring back actionable steps to council, so we can move quickly on the intersection improvement.
That would be great. That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We next have all the citizens, individuals who wish to make comments. They may speak during this part of the agenda, or may reserve the right to speak specifically when an item is up for vote on the council floor. All individuals who intend to address City Council are required to sign a particular book that I have right here, and the book was out there until 6 o'clock. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes, and we have Jermaine first. You want to come to the podium, give us your name, your address, and tell us about this product, this event coming up.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jermaine Summerhour. Yeah, I know, like, the last name is tongue-tied, it's like, what? Okay. I've been living in Hamilton for over 46 years of my life. I reside at 722 Gordon Smith, went to Harrison Elementary, Garfield Junior High, Hamilton Big Blue, graduated from St. Clair Community College, won a liberal arts degree. I'm partnership in a barbershop, 867 Central Avenue, so I'm locally here. One of the things that I've been doing for the last past four to five years is trying to reinvest in the community, meaning by doing things that doesn't cost the community anything. Me and my friends... Me and my friends put together that we have seen a need and an understanding for the community to be able to come together, socialize, for one. Two, is to get some type of help of access of communication, meaning by doctors, nurses, small business people, to be able to help them get some things that most people don't like to come to. So, in the presentation, as you can see, we came up with the term "for the community, by the community." And basically, these are individuals who are from Hamilton, that live in Hamilton, and that reside in Hamilton, and we try to do things that better the community and for the individuals that are in Hamilton. So, our mission is basically to provide the community with resources, activities that increase awareness in all aspects of our lives. And our thing is that we take it one step at a time. So, this is the things that we try to do next. One of the things that we try to do is for "for the community, by the community" is we're having an event that is a health expo for kids and adults. It's on July 24, 2022. It starts from 10 o'clock and it ends roughly around about 6:00. And one of the things that will be going on is at the Booker T. Washington Community Center, and we're have access to the whole community center, inside and outside. So, there will be activities for kids and adults. And some of those activities have physical activities to help to get the kids active. But one of the things that we are bringing is community awareness far as mental health, physical health, and awareness of what's going on in the changing of our community far as ethnic people that are coming in, Hispanics, Micronesians, and things of this nature. So, we're trying to open up our doors far as we're trying to get people to come in and communicate. So, there should never be a need of, "You don't know your neighbor." That's the thing. Another thing is, no one should be able to be scared to come out and communicate with each other. So, this is a branching of, as we say, we're extending the olive branch. We would like to get to know you. Bring your kids around. So, kids should never be embarrassed to have fun and play with other kids. Other grown adults should never have a hard time trying to communicate with another adult. So, this is a way that we have branched out to be able to communicate with the public and people that are coming into our community, that are residing in our community. So, that our impact is that this is one of the things that we're doing, that we're trying to do. So, there would be a punt-pass-and-kick competition. There would be a four, three-on-three basketball tournament, soccer agility. There would be an obstacle course for the kids to be able to challenge themselves physically, but also mentally, that we will be, next page, that we will be having doctors, lawyers, psychiatrists, therapists, that will be coming out, not only to check on the kids, but for the adults, too. Because one of the things that we're trying to do is that autism has become a very prevalent thing in our households and our neighborhoods. So, we have autism specialists coming out. We have lawyers coming out to give you information on new laws and things that are changing that may affect you directly or indirectly. One of the neat things that we're doing is that it's going to be a very big parade. And this parade that I'm trying to do will help the community brighten itself, gather itself. As of right now, I have almost 100 cars that's going to attend this parade. I have about almost 150 motorcycles that are going to attend this parade. I have two fire trucks from the fire department that have volunteered their time, that will be carrying the American flag in honor of our fallen victims of military, in honor of our military. Also, they will be a big balloon release far as people who have had cancer, survived from it, family members that have passed away from cancer, lupus, and other clinical diseases. Also, that we will be honoring our veterans again, and that we have one special individual that is in Butler County, Hamilton. He is 94 years old. Listen to this. He is the only living individual that played Negro baseball league out of Butler County. You don't hear, the only individual that played in the Negro League that came out of Butler County. He is still living, and he's still driving a truck at 94. Right. So, we have gathered some things with the help of 17 Strong. There's going to be a bouncy house, popcorn machine, there's going to be barbecue, free food. The food is free. When I say there's going to be food, there's going to be food. We ain't talking about just hamburgers and hot dogs. We're talking about, good, we can sit back and, you know, catch the itis a little bit. Yeah, man, the music's good, sit in the shade, that type of environment. So, I'm telling you as an individual from the community to come out, bring your kids, bring your grandkids. If you have old-school cars, get in touch with me. Come and speak. Like I said, we have Spanish interpreters that will be there. We're going to have French interpreters that's going to be there. We're going to have doctors, lawyers, physicians, free blood pressure checks, free optical checks. The bookmobile will be there to give out free books in Spanish and English for the kids and the adults. So, like I'm saying, I'm trying to cover every corner that I can to be able to become a service to our community. And this is my job as a person in the community, to help our community, to try to better awareness of our community. So, there's going to be a car expedition, which means that it's going to be some cars, muscle cars, do some burnouts, there's going to be some bikes there doing some stunt tricks and everything for the enjoyment of the kids. The splash pad will be open. There will be good music for everybody to listen to. Like I said, the activity is a family-oriented activity. So, this is some of the things that I'm doing. And like I said, I have help. I would like more help, volunteers, people who are paraprofessionals, people who have small businesses that want to come out to talk about your business. Get in touch with me. I greatly appreciate your time. I greatly appreciate City Council's time in this. And I truly believe in the making and the understanding of "for the community, by the community." And that's my presentation, I think.
Thank you very much, Jermaine. Are there any questions? Any questions? Is this your email address that you put down as your contact information?
Yes.
Okay, great. We'll make sure all of council has that, and we'll communicate with you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if anybody needs pamphlets, I have some questionable pamphlets that give you information, so if you need some, I have some here. And I'd like to, again, I thank everybody for the platform that you gave me this evening.
You'll give those to the city clerk? He'll take a look at them, get them to us, if that's okay?
And again, to the Lightning Club, hey, you guys did a fantastic job. Keep doing it. This is one of the innovation things that kids do, and I love LEGO for that, that they're building on innovation. And I'm glad that you kids have been able to take a part of that and be a part of that innovation. Solar energy is very much needed in our day and time, and I hope that maybe you guys maybe be able to solve a platform problem that our Earth is going through and having. So, I thank you guys for literally being a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership. Next, we have Jim Lonnaman. Jim, you gave us your address, and your subject is those sewer lids. You have a list of sewer lids that you can give us tonight.
Well, okay, when Jim Lonnaman, 135 Timber Hill Drive, 45013. Okay, well, actually, on, here, what's that street called? Timber Hill Drive, 991 Drive.
Okay.
What's that street, Jim, goes Timber Hill? I always wonder, I saw another, one of them sewer lids are singing down again, it was things for the electric company, you know? It's pretty bad, I mean, why don't they fix those things?
All I know is we've got the right man on the job, and that's Rich Engel. To make this list up.
Well, he says up to Jim Williams.
Those guys work together. We're a great city team. They'll work together and...
Well, hell, I'm trying to help them too.
You're part of our great city team, Jim.
Well, if I'm part of a great city team?
No.
Put me on the, put me on the count.
I said no before I even asked the question. You're a volunteer part of the city team.
I'm telling you, put me on the, I'm not telling you, asking, I'm telling you.
Do we have any other of those locations that Rich can write down?
Okay, and also, also, fixing that around on East Street, or East Avenue, whatever, those train tracks, something out there. Let's see, they're getting real bad over there, and people going around things, and so I can't get around them train tracks, them old train, the old train tracks.
Contact the railroad on that one.
Huh?
Well, contact the railroad on that, because that's their jurisdiction.
How many times have I heard that same thing? There was nothing.
You're telling us, we're writing it down. Anything else, Jim?
That's it, thank you.
No, thank you. Dan Hancock?
My name's Dan Hancock. I live at 67 Herman Avenue in Hamilton, Ohio. We have a vacant, or business here at Steak and Shake, and that has been vacant for like six years and that. And the grass needs to be cut and that, and the building needs to be something done to it either torn down or something.
I'm going to make a list, because I think we can address those relatively efficiently here shortly. What else is on your list? I know you gave a list to the city manager. He's got a lot of things to work on. You gave it to him, right?
Okay, and then the bike trail and that, it was really nice. You got the final top pavement down. I rode my bike down it the other day.
Great.
And it's really nice, except for you're putting up the guardrails now along the section down towards B Street, and you're getting ready to do the section up by Cleveland. But in between there, you've got sections that haven't been considered, that you're two feet from going over the hillside. If something happens in that, you'll fall 50 feet down the creek bed below and that. So, they need to look about putting in some more guardrails along where it's really close to the edge here and that for safety reasons.
Is that on the city manager's list already?
Oh, there's more to that today. Add it to the list. But, yeah, like I said, the trail looks really beautiful and that, and I applaud the city for its use and that, and we can't wait for the third section to start up.
Okay. Mr. Manager, can you give a brief report, if you're able to, about the Steak and Shake? Because he asked about the Steak and Shake building and the care of the building, I mean, the grounds, when you were, not in the room.
Yes, I can, yes. So, a building permit, a building set of plans has been submitted to the building permit department. I was told just last week that we did receive a demolition permit. I see both Tom and Liz shaking their head, yes. Any idea of when the demolition will take place? Yeah, my sense on the report I received last week is that before May is out, you'll see the building demolished, and I'm assuming they're going to start construction almost immediately. So, that would probably address some of the concerns. Unfortunately, I didn't hear what the exact, the exact concerns, but it should address some of the concerns that you probably listed.
Is the city going to cut the grass there?
Well, you know, the city prefers not to cut other people's grass if we can help it, but hopefully that we get the demolition going and the construction fencing up, and we'll have them moving forward soon.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Dan. Okay. That cares of audience of citizens will now go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, and information reports, which include our March 2022 financial report, our March 2022 investment report. So, we're going to go in the committee of the whole, and that allows council to talk informally and hear some reports about items that are on the caucus agenda. So, do you motion that the regular meeting be recessed, the committee of the whole take place?
So moved.
Second?
Motion to my council member Nab. Second my council member Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The time is 7:25. The caucus agenda actually has nine items, and I guess what we'll do is, is one needs to be polled, but can we have the presentation, I guess, before it gets officially polled? What should we do on that, Madam Lauder? Number nine's got to be polled, only because one of our council members can't vote on that one.
We can go through all the presentations and do that after we close committee of the whole.
All right. Let's start then.
Our first presentation for agenda item number one will be from Ms. Liz Hayden, our Director of the Planning Department, related to conditional use approval for a vocational school.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. So, the one thing that the planning department is bringing to City Council tonight is a conditional use application for 999 Laurel for a truck-driving school. Vocational schools are conditional uses, and so it needs City Council review and approval. So, it's Napier Truck Driving Driver Training, Inc., that's requesting the use for the existing empty lot at 999 Laurel. You may, I'm sure you're all familiar with this site. It's a very, very big site that was a longtime industrial site in the city of Hamilton that burnt down a few years ago and is now a vacant lot. And they are proposing to use the site for up to two years, and no longer than two years. They currently have a site at 3113 Dixie Highway. They continue to, they plan to continue operating there and just use this as an extension of their existing facility due to the need for truck drivers. They are proposing up to five trucks at a time on site, and they would be using it from Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. All maneuvering would occur on the private property. They would not leave the property or utilize local roads. That was one of the, we got a couple of calls and emails and questions from residents concerned that there'd be parking and driving on Weller Avenue, and that's not something that's part of the proposal. There's no trucks overnight, and because it's proposed as a temporary use, they are proposing relatively temporary changes to the site and minor cleanup work. So, this is the site plan for that. So, as you can see, it's like a whole block, maybe multiple blocks. So, it's got streets on each side, and they propose different areas on the site for different kinds of turning and training, truck training activity. One of the things that got brought up from residents who were participating in the public hearing, you'll see on the, to the south, you'll see where there's the predominantly residential area on Weller. There's other residences kind of around, but that's the primary one that we had people calling about, and they, in the meeting, committed to moving the truck-driving activity even further away from that residential area on Weller. You see that they're, what they're proposing is a fenced office trailer area and a porta lot area and a dumpster with a dumpster enclosure near the residences, and the rest is student parking and truck activity. I just wanted to highlight a couple of conditions of approval for you. There was many, but ones I thought you might be interested in for this unique proposal is that they are proposing to use it two years maximum, and so the condition is that they would have to vacate it after two years. And then, the conditional use will not be approved and granted until traffic engineering receives and approves the truck-turning movement analysis for the proposed truck-access point off Laurel Avenue. There's one spot that trucks are proposed in and out, and I know that they're working on that right now. And then, the business will abide by all noise, odor, glare, and other regulations found in the Hamilton zoning ordinance. They talked a little bit about the modern trucks and how they're not noisy and don't emit a lot of gas or anything like that. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
The exit is on, is where the entry is as well? Where would the exit be, or is it in the same?
It's proposed the truck entry, sorry, truck access, entry and exit is the same. It's that point on Laurel Avenue by the drive-through.
And we'll just be staying on Laurel to?
Correct.
Mayor?
Please.
Liz, is it a fenced-in area, or when they're not there, anybody can walk on it?
They're not proposing a full fenced area. Anybody could walk on it, and there's not supposed to be anything really on the site overnight.
Okay.
Liz, they're asking for conditional use approval. Does that mean that if this passes by vote, as far as the concurrent recommendation, do we vote again on this ever again, or is this for the, this is it right here?
Right, so you... Right, so you have a couple of options. If you agree with the planning commission's recommendation and their proposed conditions of approval, this could be the final action tonight. But if you would like to have further discussion about this, would like to amend conditions, do something different, it could go on to first and second readings, but you would have to specify that for that to occur.
Counsel, have any idea how they wish to proceed on this? Or as other conditions or as far as having it go to?
Mr. Mayor?
Vote. Ask Mr. Pullman.
I have a question on, did we send out, we sent out letters and everything to the neighborhood, right?
Correct.
You had one complaint?
We had two or three people reach out and one that actively participated in the public hearing and the one that sent an email and the person that was, that we mostly were working with in the meeting was not, had a lot of concerns, she had a lot of concerns, but was not wholeheartedly opposed to it. She just wanted to, she, you know, was worried it was gonna be noisy and there was a lot of back and forth and I, and at the end of the day, we essentially, you know, I gave her my contact information and said, you know, if this was to be approved, you know, reach out to me. You know, they're saying it's not gonna be noisy. They're saying it's not gonna create odor, but call me if that's, you know, not the case kind of thing. And I think that is, we didn't wind up after the hearing having opposition. You know, there wasn't additional phone calls or emails after once it was approved.
Five hundred foot area?
Five hundred foot area.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. So, I guess when we get to the vote on this, we may have some more comments. Or is everybody ready for this to continue or be finished this evening? Question?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Liz one more question?
Please do.
Are you comfortable with this?
This is a tough site because it's zoned industrial. It's always been industrial and five, three to five trucks on it is a relatively not intense use for industrial-wise. But the, for a permanent use, the future land use plan envisions a enclosed structure. But for something that's a temporary use, I can just say with the planning commission went back and forth, they felt, they felt comfortable with it as a temporary use for a site that's not being utilized right now.
Okay, and that was my thought too. I just wanted to hear who felt.
My recall from the planning commission meeting was that the fact that it expired in two years was a pretty important fact. That's, I think, one of the major reasons why planning commission went ahead and said, okay. And I think the neighbors were starting to say, two years, see how it goes, but there would be an open door of communication during those two years. That's my recollection.
Yes, I agree.
All right, with that being said, any comment at all? Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Okay, Daniel, you're gonna be doing two, three, and four? And five, I guess, too, right?
Mm-hmm. All right, good evening, Mayor, members of city council, members of the public. I'll be doing presentations on the exciting topic of liquor permits in agricultural districts this evening. So we have three liquor permit applications on the caucus agenda for tonight. These applications are notices that we received from the division of liquor control, giving us a notice to, as a legislative authority, to object to these permits. The appropriate departments for these objections are the health department, fire, and building, and on a separate occasion, the police department. So in this case, for all three of these permits, the staff, our staff reviewed these permits and there were no objections. So our recommendation is that city council does not object to these permits and they concur with our recommendations. So, that's strange. Okay, so of our three permits, we have the Central Gas BP on eleven-fifty-seven Central Avenue. We have another liquor permit for one-fifty Fair Avenue, that's for Gil Ohio Incorporated, and the Meyer store over on one-five-five-four Main Street. So the separate item, agenda item number five, this is a application for farmland renewal. The property in question is fourteen forty-one New London Road. Our applicants, Darren and Cinnamon Troken, they are applying for a renewal of farmland or a farmland agricultural district. This is the, I think, the third time that they have done this, so this is fairly standard and council has seen this before. But Ohio Revised Code, Section nine-twenty-nine point oh-two, is a application to place agricultural land in agricultural district. This only allows agricultural production, land retirement, or conservation for a period of five years. After those five years, the applicant then has to either renew or reapply. In this case, our interdepartmental review committee had the opportunity to review this application. There were no objections. So if you concur with our staff's recommendations tonight, we will have a public hearing on this item in case you need any more information. But ultimately, this will go to a resolution in which our city council and the Butler County auditor will be working together on this project. So, do we have any questions on either of those items?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
In regard to the liquor permits, the item number two and three, it doesn't indicate if these are new. Do these locations or all of these new? The third one does say it's a new permitted Myers.
Right, so for some of these, we do get permit transfers. So as an example, actually, eleven-fifty-seven Central Avenue, that's an example from a Trex agreement or a transfer from a different, excuse me, permit holder to this location. So that's actually from Blanchester, Ohio, and they're gonna be transferred into Hamilton.
So that means they've never sold alcohol there before at the Central BP?
Oh, yeah, well, the Central BP is a whole new build.
Okay, that's new, so they've never had a liquor license is the point?
Oh, no. Not at this location.
And then Fair Avenue is the same way?
Yeah, Fair Avenue, that actually used to be a retail store. It has, since the uses have changed over time to the point where they needed all new permits, like completely gutting the building. So this case, this used to be, I think the last proposed use was a church. But in this case, it's gonna, I think, gonna be a new retail store.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, you're doing number six?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. This report's about the second supplemental appropriation for twenty-twenty-two. The total proposed increase in expenditures is about fourteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. That's for all funds. The first two bullet points you see up there, that money already resides in the general fund. It came from the ARPA money and it's part of that thirteen million dollar unencumbered fund balance. We've talked several times about a new criminal justice center and we're proposing using ten million dollars of that, you know, if the ARPA funds for that. So we'd like to transfer four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund into the budget stabilization fund and just kind of set that aside for the criminal justice complex. We'd do another five and a quarter million dollars on the second round of money that'll come this summer. So that would be the full ten million for that. The second bullet point, the one point one-five million, that's for the South B Street improvements we've talked about. That's the resurfacing from the Columbia Bridge to Main Street, the storm sewers, the planting of trees, and all the improvements along there. That would all come from the ARPA funds. And it's currently, like I said, in the general fund. Also, from the general fund, we're doing a grant to the CIC, not to a C six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The CIC board has met on this. They have accepted the grant. You can see the uses up there. It's the Hamilton Community Foundations, their capital campaign for Little League, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for property purchases on Ross Avenue and on C Street. And I think there was around seventy thousand dollars for proposed building demolitions on Main Street and the Rossville Flats. We're transferring, or proposing to transfer five hundred thousand dollars to one Renaissance Fund. That's the fund, you know, for this building, the building maintenance here. And then you can see below that, the reason we're transferring it is, is, you know, we're having to do maintenance on this building. Last summer, we put a roof on the building. In May, we're proposing putting new cooling towers on the roof. That's part of the HVAC system. If temperature cooperates, we do it during the week. If not, we'll do it on the weekend, so not to disrupt our employees and also the tenants. We're gonna move forward with the tug pointing and power washing. I know there's been concerns over some of the dirt that's accumulated on the building over the years, so we're gonna move forward with that. And the general building restacking from, from the tenants moving down, you know, we've had expansion with eighty acres, expansion with ODW, very fortunate to have that. So we're gonna have to, you know, restack and all that's included in that one point five-two-nine million dollars. The Champion Bill Sports Complex, this is simply collecting money from the Butler County Auditor. It's paid by the Spooky Nook LLC to the Butler County Auditor. It comes to us just simply as a pass-through and then we'll have to move that on to the HCA for debt service. And finally, the electric construction fund has about one and a quarter million dollars for additional work on a substation at the Enterprise Park. You guys have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Next one, Daniel?
Next one would be for number seven, which is the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and that'll be by Nate Perry, our Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tonight, for your consideration, we have a collective bargaining agreement, a tentative agreement between the city and IBW. IBW is our electric and electricians and line workers who support our traffic, engineering, distribution, and plant operations throughout the city. We reached a tentative agreement earlier this month that the union has ratified on April eighteenth. And negotiations went very well. It was, you know, really good terms on both sides of the table there. The agreement's a three-year term. It's a two-and-a-half percent base wage across-the-board increase each year and then a one percent performance-based increase. And those performance metrics include safety, so lost time hours, lost time incidents, overtime availability, reliability, which is really important to our community and businesses as well, and unscheduled time off. And then additionally, in year three, there's a one percent additional increase to our electrician twos and distribution crew leaders. And really, that came out about as we want to be able to attract and retain people into those important leadership roles that oversee the work and the safety of the crews that are working out in our community. And then finally, there's an increase to comp time from eighty to a hundred and twenty hours. And again, this group reports after hours, often works a lot of overtime to support the reliability and keeping the power on. So this allows some flexibility with how they use that additional time. Do you guys have any questions about this?
Any questions? Thank you, good report.
Thank you very much.
Number?
Number eight.
Number eight.
So number eight, this is a presentation about emergency purchase of materials. So coming to the podium, our Director of Engineering, he is a certified professional engineer by the state of Ohio. Mr. Rich Engel.
Thanks, Daniel. Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. We have a couple of development projects that have us concerned about the availability of water main materials. First one is the one thousand north Third Street development. The red line you can see on the aerial drawing is the existing water main and we need to extend it about six hundred additional feet to the north with eight-inch water main in order to serve the proposed development. There's also a hydrant assembly included with that. We received the bids yesterday and the low bid was forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents with an approximate delivery date of mid-July. And our plan is to get the material, store it here in the city, and then hire a contractor to do the installation as soon as we can get the drawings prepared and plans so that the, we can get the proper bids on that, proper public bids. The other project is at eight, wait. Eight-fifty South Erie Boulevard, there's a development going into that existing building there. In the need to provide fire suppression, they need fifteen hundred GPM at seventy PSI and the water mains adjacent to that building is six-inch and four-inch water mains, which would not be able to provide what's needed. So we're proposing to purchase fifteen hundred feet of twelve-inch water main and accessories with a couple of fire hydrant assemblies. The bid price for that project is hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cents with an approximate delivery date of mid-October. And again, we will bid the actual installation of the water main at a later date. You have any questions?
Any questions? Well, Rich, we definitely know you're a busy guy. I think Daniel recognized that and kind of changed your walk-up intro, your walk-up song a little bit. Who knows what the next one will be?
Who knows?
We noticed you're about three inches taller after the interview.
Okay.
Lastly, for item number nine, we have some members of the Hamilton Parks Conservancy joining us tonight. Adam Cordna and Steve Timmer will be here to discuss the future of seven sixteen Gordon Smith Boulevard.
Evening. Thanks for having us. I'll be brief. Actually, the new director of the Hamilton Parks Conservancy, for those of you I haven't met yet, I'm still making the rounds, three months in. Something that Steve talked to me about when we, when I got to start here was a new park project and it's something that he had developed, so I'm actually gonna let him describe it a little bit to you.
Introduce yourself.
Fellow advisor, Steve Timmer, fifty-one Laurel Lane. One of the things that we've been looking for over the years in the expansion of the park system, we're constructing new parks. We've been utilizing the ten-minute walk to a park, which is a national standard. Presently, the city of Hamilton, about seventy-four percent of our citizens are within a ten-minute walk to the park. And we were able to increase it to that by the building of Jefferson Park. It was also like a park desert. So Gordon Smith Boulevard was another area that's blocked as an area that is needing a park. There are several areas around town, the Monroe School site, which we thought we had something going on for a while, but the school system wanted to hold on to it for a while because of the possibility of a preschool. Then we looked at, there's another area that actually the school system owns also and then, but we've been looking at the Gordon Smith, so I got on the Butler County Auditor's website and I found this partial, which I've been going by for years and never did know what it was for. So I looked it up to see who owned it and it was Ed and Judy Shelton, who I worked for years ago for a very long time, well, about four years I worked for him. So I decided to give Ed a call and I said, hey, Ed, I says, you know, we're looking to possibly build a small totlot park. There's a lot of small children on Gordon Smith Boulevard and the backyards are actually parking lots, dumpster pads, so they really don't have any place to play. This is not a huge area. It'd be a very small park, about a hundred by a hundred. It'd be about a two hundred and sixty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollar project. But I asked Ed about it and it was actually an easement for possibility of a road in the future, but actually, when you get to the end of it, it falls off. You'd almost have to build a bridge. So I guess the city did approve that they could vacate that easement and Ed said he'd be, Ed and Judy basically said they'd donate the property. So I think that's on your agenda tonight. And what we'd like to do is build this totlot. We're writing the grant now to the community foundation to assist us. And like I said, it'll have a playground for, this, it's mainly gonna be a park for twelve and under. It'll have seating area for the mothers or fathers. It'll have a playground, it'll have- Uh, it'll have a playground, it'll have an inclusive world, it'll be a, uh, the grass-type fall protection, which is a little different than the wood fiber. It'll be less maintenance for us, so we have the ability to do that, uh, we have the ability to maintain it. So what we'd like you to, your support tonight in order to move forward on this park project. Anybody have any questions?
Anything else you want to say, uh, Steve?
What else have I got to say?
Well, we got something to say to you, I think, here.
Do what?
We've given this a lot of thought, talked to a lot of people. It's unanimous that we would like to name this park after you. You have put so much into it. We just think that it is so worthy of you.
And we know that's not your favorite thing, but the reality is, Steve, that you've been looking at this location, you've been forming the board of this location for years, and it's the right place and it's the right time. And the fact that you are officially retiring as the full-time director of the Hamilton Parks Conservancy, it just makes sense that this would be a fitting, it should be fitting. It just would be the right thing to do at the right time to recognize all the efforts that you have personally put in, that your family has sacrificed because of all the hours that you've put in for the park system. It's just a way to show our gratitude and our thanks for everything you've done for the city and the Hamilton Parks Conservancy.
Well, I appreciate it. I, I did not expect this, I'll be quite honest with you. But I do appreciate it.
Well, I mean, you're even the one that reached out to Ed and Judy, but everything that you have done, it was just the most, Ugly actually is the one that kind of brought all this up to us. So we haven't had time to draft this sign for you yet, but we discussed what it should say.
Uh-oh.
No, and you, we didn't know if we should put in the Steve with the signs for, um, when you're upset and really, well, Timber Parker, we decided to just go with the standard.
Yeah, like that. Howard Hack Wilson.
Yeah.
Steve, you're kind of like a laughing emoji to a certain degree. So full of expression, and we also got a key to the city for you because, and this is kind of one which, which I put some special language in here because I think it truly does fit. This is a key to your park as well. Key to the city presented by Hamilton City Council and the citizens of Hamilton. I think it's an important distinction about some of the other keys because this is from all of us who have seen what you have done with the park system. I know, by the way, you were a firefighter, you've served on the community foundation board, and all the things that you've done. So this doesn't mean that you stop right now, but this is just a key, so you'll keep going. But it's presented by Hamilton City Council and the citizens of Hamilton on April 27, 2022. This is Steve Timmer. Thank you for your many contributions to the city of Hamilton, including the beautification of our city, for the Hamilton Parks Conservancy.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to go get some beer and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, before we have the two separate votes, uh, is there a motion that the committee will be closed?
So moved. Second.
Motion, my council member Fear, second by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The time is 7:55. Is the motion, do we reconvene the regular meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion by council member Nab, uh, second by council member Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
There's going to be a request to poll number nine and vote separately on that one. Is there such a, a request for that? A motion? Poll nine?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
A motion by council member Nab.
Second.
Second by council member Vaughn, that we poll nine, and I believe that is due to, uh, Vice Mayor Ryan's, uh, I think closest to this property or something to that effect. So is that a roll call vote, Letitia?
Voice vote, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. So is there a motion that with the exception of item nine, the council received the reports and the consent agenda concurrent recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Fear. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. Would you please read number nine in to the record, then we'll vote on that separately.
Recommendation relative to accepting the donation of real property located at 716 Gordon Smith Boulevard, Shelton &amp; Sons Incorporated donor, City of Hamilton Donie.
Is there a motion that we can, we receive the report concurrent in that recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Nab, second by council member Fear. Roll call vote on that, uh, motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Stay.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
We now go to pending legislation, agenda item number 10, second reading of ordinance involving obstructions.
An ordinance amending and supplementing section 901.03, obstructions of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio regarding administrative fees and repeat violators, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by vice mayor Ryan. Questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
We now go to new legislation, agenda item number, uh, 13, involving, uh, the Assistant Economic Development Director position.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2021-12-121, adopted December 8th, 2021 by adding the new classification of Assistant Economic Development Director, first reading.
Thank you. We then go to agenda item number 14, which is an emergency ordinance, two readings involving the Community Improvement Corporation and some grants.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio as the city's agency for development in the city and authorizing a grant in the amount of not to exceed $370,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio for public purposes and declaring an emergency, that is the first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title. Second.
Motion by council member Pullman, second by council member Nab. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
We now go to new legislation, agenda item number, uh, 13, involving, uh, the Assistant Economic Development Director position.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2021-12-121, adopted December 8th, 2021 by adding the new classification of Assistant Economic Development Director, first reading.
Thank you. We then go to agenda item number 14, which is an emergency ordinance, two readings involving the Community Improvement Corporation and some grants.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio as the city's agency for development in the city and authorizing a grant in the amount of not to exceed $370,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio for public purposes and declaring an emergency, that is the first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title. Second.
Motion by council member Pullman, second by council member Nab. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio as the city's agency for development in the city and authorizing a grant in the amount of not to exceed $370,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio for public purposes and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Pullman.
Make the motion that the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Motion by council member Pullman, second by council member Nab. Questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number, uh, 15, uh, resolution involving our 2022 concrete resurfacing program.
A resolution ordering the resurfacing and repair of streets and concrete where necessary and appropriate on various streets and avenues in the city of Hamilton, Ohio. 2022 concrete and resurfacing program, addition of Gray Avenue from Northeast Street to North D Street assessment roll.
Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Ryan, seconded by council member Vaughn. Uh, discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 16, which is a resolution involving a side lot.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 915 Vine Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Pullman, seconded by, uh, council member Fear. Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Okay, audience of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick items. Uh, just a reminder that tomorrow, there is a media day event at ThyssenKrupp-Bilstein in Hamilton that begins at 10:30. Some of you may already be aware, it's sort of bittersweet for me because Fabian Schmall's last day with Bilstein is this Friday. Uh, Fabian has been the president of Bilstein since the day I started as city manager, uh, has been a tremendous advocate for the city. Uh, back in 2010, when I started, Bilstein had about 150, 160 full-time employees, and their, uh, corporate office in Germany was pushing them to relocate to Mexico. They stayed in Hamilton, um, and they currently have about 900 full-time employees. So, uh, just tremendous, uh, I had breakfast with Fabian, uh, early Monday morning, and that's when he, he told me the news, but, um, but certainly, uh, he's looking forward to tomorrow. Uh, the, the president of Jobs, Ohio will be there, a lot of state dignitaries will be there, uh, but they've done a ton of capital expansion in the past decade, and he really wants to, uh, anyone from the council or staff that can come, he really wants to show that off tomorrow. Also a reminder that, uh, the mayor and I will be doing a midterm state of the city address a week from tomorrow. Um, I believe it starts at 6 o'clock. I don't know if we've ever fully verified that.
5:55, I think I heard.
5:55, um...
Cinco de Mayo.
5:55 on 5/5, May 5th, but...
I heard definitely somebody in the city. I didn't make that up. I'm not smart enough.
I'm sure the mayor will be there very early anyway, but I'll get there about 5:55. And, um, really looking forward, a lot of, uh, really cool announcements. Thankfully, a lot of the announcements have happened in the last couple of weeks to give us more to talk about, but, uh, it's, it's really an exciting time to be in Hamilton. Um, as council knows, uh, we had a strategic, our annual, uh, strategic retreat yesterday. The executive leadership team, uh, continued that meeting today, but it's, it's very difficult from a strategic perspective on where we focus because there's so much going on, and obviously, strategy is about making choices, and, and to be good at strategy, you have to limit your choices, but, um, but just what a, what a fun time to be in Hamilton, Ohio. I'm really looking forward to some of those announcements on May 5th. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on, uh, Fabian Schmall. He's a true leader, uh, leader of Chamber of Commerce. He grew that business, and we all watched it, and, uh, he's got so many things to be proud of, of what he accomplished here in the city of Hamilton, and, uh, wishing the best of luck. Audience of city council, I want to bring up a couple of things. Uh, Hamilton Fairfield Task Force, uh, Mayor Mitch Rotis and I talked in February of this year. He's very interested in starting up again the Hamilton Fairfield Task Force, and I he envisions, and I envision, maybe three council members each, draft up a list of things that we could work on together, and then, uh, bringing the city managers to take a look at the drafted list, not after the first meeting or two, but when we have enough on a list, and to see what we can accomplish because they are our neighbors, they, uh, we have both, uh, done well lately, and I think it's just good that we do, uh, be a Hamilton Fairfield Task Force, and we can talk about some of these things. Now, Hamilton-Middletown Task Force, uh, they're not a direct neighbor, but we do share a lot of things in common with them. Uh, I'm going to have Vice Mayor Ryan say a few things, but, you know, for better than both cities, us in Fairfield and us in Middletown as well, there are certain cost efficiencies maybe we could do, sharing of information, sharing information about social services issues, even use of opioids, settlement monies, um, and, and those two historical cities, Hamilton and Middletown, I think I ought to sit down and talk face to face. Vice Mayor Ryan, I know you have some comments, you have some great interest in this.
Uh, yeah, I, first of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, for continuing this. I, I remember when, when Dad was serving with, uh, you and, um, Councilwoman Fear, and you guys collaborated with Fairfield, Joe Nuxall and, um, the Boulevard Extension. I, I think collaboration is key in moving the cities forward because it just benefits both communities, uh, and that's something I'm, I'm really hoping we can, we can accomplish with, with Middletown. Um, I, I did call Councilman Tal Moon up there because we have a, a good working relationship, and, um, he's on board. I'm glad we got ahold of, um, uh, Mayor Nicole. Um, so I, Mayor, council, if it's okay with you, I'd like to, um, continue pitching this idea and working with Middletown, if, if that's okay with you. I, I think they are, well, will be really engaged with this. Um, I think both cities actually share, um, well, experience a lot of the same issues that, that we face, and I, I think, um, establishing, establishing, uh, communication, collaboration, and just a willingness to, to talk about things, um, perhaps share some ideas on how we can approach some of these issues that, um, that we, we fight every day. I think that would only help get some things established here.
And I think you said to me you'd like to be the person to go up there and talk to Middletown, city council?
Yep. I think they got a meeting, um, next Tuesday.
As I said, I did, I did contact Mayor Middletown, and, and she'll get back with me, and I think we've got that one going, and I know Mitch Rotis is very excited to start Hamilton Fairfield Task Force. So if there's a concurrence on council that we start doing that, let's talk about putting
where Fairfield, Hamilton, and Middletown can come, maybe work through some issues initially. Maybe in a year, we all meet together.
I think we're all for this, and I think we're just going to, we're going to make something out of it, just like the prior council did with Joe Nuxall Way. All right, everybody okay with that?
Good.
Sounds good.
Okay. Next, if it's okay, I'd like to have Joel Lauer give us a sports update about the bowling challenge.
We had an absolute blast. We invited the, we challenged the state championship girls bowling team to a, just a match. And what an exciting thing for, I think, for all of us. You know, I think when we start engaging with our young people, I can see a different tone amongst the council members, with the exception of Joshua. Everybody was extremely excited, but I seen some frustration.
He was serious.
Extremely.
He was. Competitive.
There was some frustration, but he worked it out. We cracked a smile a couple of times. Mr. Mohler created a whole new technique in bowling, and those girls had a great time. And I think, and I appreciate including Hamilton High and, and everything that we do. I think it was a great for the city. Those girls had a blast, and they were tough.
So they gave us a participation trophy? Because we did not beat any of them. Which is a 2022 Girls D1 State Champion bowling pin autographed by all of them.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
We're going to probably display that, and it was fun. Even the young lady said that we were going down. Well, you know, she was right. We did not win.
We played five games. We won one. I mean, their series was 726, ours was 435, but it was.
85, wasn't it?
It might, I might have read that wrong. It really didn't matter after that, but we got smoked.
That was our average stupor game.
But we did win. We did talk a lot of smack when we won that first game, and we just went right down. Well.
Thanks for your leadership in this, Joel, and thanks for bringing things to our attention about what's going on in our schools. I got to mention a couple of things. I went to Baden's signing day today. It was one of our city teammates, Jeffrey Mata, Baden High School senior, works with Liz and Jessica in the playing department. And I'll tell you what, I've never seen a happier person, I think, than Jean Pope. She actually stood up and pointed at Jeffrey and said, "Way to go," that kind of thing during the signing day, and that was great. So we had about four or five city people there. He's going to Mount St. Joseph's to play football, and he has really done a good job in our playing department. So that was exciting, and he, and he coached, you were one of the coaches?
When that young man came to the United States, he didn't speak any English. He is a terrific young man, and I hope that we're able to retain him in the future.
I hope so too, every, every summer. And it's an example of our CHIPS program, because he's part of the CHIPS internship. I did learn that, I think it's 27 of 92 Baden High School athletes are going to the next level. And that's a great percentage for students and athletes. And that was a very nice signing day, and I think there's going to be some more. Then I also went to Garfield Middle School today, and they had that one book, one city. Garfield's now got one building, one book, and they're all reading the book, Hidden Figures, I think it is, involving the NASA program. And I tell you, just the whole concept that the teachers got going. They picked a book that covers multiple, multiple genres. You've got math in that book. You've got history in that book. You've got some great personalities, really true heroes. And it's just great to be visiting both those schools today and to see what we've got going on in our school system. So good luck to them with their one book, one, one building, one book. And very exciting. They're going to have a big movie night after the book's read, bring parents, the whole bit. I'd say that's May 23rd. That's a lot of great stuff going on. That's all I've got. I'm sorry I talk so much. Anybody else have anything else they want to present?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Please.
Just, just a couple of things. Tonight, we witnessed, and in past, we've witnessed, the generosity of Hamiltonians in dedicating and donating land for use by the Parks Conservancy. And as Steve Timmer and our new Parks Conservancy director shared, is the walkable entities of parks that welcome all people of all ages to be able to sit and enjoy the community, but be able to take little ones and young teenagers to the parks, enjoy the parks in a safe, clean environment. Seventeen Strong embraces, in Parks Conservancy, embrace each other to the nth degree. Seventeen Strong is sponsoring 17 cleanups in 17 days. The first 17 days of the month of May, the cube will be traveling at 5 o'clock in the afternoon. It connotates the 17th hour, but the cube will be traveling to each neighborhood on one of the 17 days. Please go to the City of Hamilton website, go on the Facebook page for Seventeen Strong, for the Department of Neighborhoods, and you'll be able to find out exactly where the cube is going to be in your neighborhood the day that it'll be there. The cleanups will last approximately an hour, so please come out into your, into your neighborhood, support the cleanup in the community, support the cube, support the initiative to keep our city clean and safe and free. Thanks very much.
One more thing, Dan, real quick. On Monday night, there was a celebration of the, the 2021 Tom Seaver Little League Champions. It was a very nice event. Martin Brenneman was there, spoke so highly of the players, our West Side Little League. George Foster was there, the personal hero of our city manager, Joshua Smith, I believe. And, and Red's Community Foundation, it was really a celebration of baseball, as well as announcing and opening the, the capital funding campaign for, for West Side Little League. Councilmember Fear and I were there, and it's a real nice event. And a lot of character building going on out there and baseball skill building. But just kind of a really good week in Hamilton, Ohio. A lot of positive things going on in our, our schools and with our, our youth recreation. So if there's anything else, speak up now, or else is there a request for executive session?
Yes, sir, there is, for two items. The first is to consider confidential information related to specific business strategy of, of an applicant for economic development. And the second is to confer with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
Okay, let's take care of your first request. Also, the motion that the executive session is found to be necessary to protect the interest of the applicant in the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with that economic development project.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Pullman, second by councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero at 8:17.
Thank you for saying that. I'll accept the motion. We go to executive session for those stated purposes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero at 8:17.
Thank you for that time as well. Okay.